Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting at the Limbrook Board of Education for November 9th, 2022. If we can also please rise, Mr. Jaeger could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting at the Limbrook Board of Education for November 9th, 2022. If we can also please rise, Mr. Jaeger could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Congratulations. The great design.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting at the Limbrook Board of Education for November 9th, 2022. If we can also please rise, Mr. Jaeger could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Congratulations. To the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, on the nation, on the God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call or pleasant, Mrs. Marcus is not feeling well. I'd like to make, if no one has any comments or changes, may have a motion to accept the minutes of the October 12th, 2022 meeting. Mrs. Dino, second, Mr. Luna, all in favor? Mr. Kuns, the art gallery, please.
The Bern Seiderman Gallery is proud to present the November 2022 show entitled Cups. Cups features the work from Mr. Kuns's, Mr. Lantini's, and Mr. Senna's drawing and painting classes. The work on display was the first project completed by the drawing and painting students this year. During this project, students reviewed skills and techniques that they learned in studio art and learned how to create accurate drawings from observation. By simply looking at the subject and drawing what is presented to the eye, the students gained solid perceptual skills and hand-eye coordination, as well as eliminating flawed preconceptions about the appearance of the cups. The students worked together in groups to create their own still lifes and render their drawings in graphite drawing pencils. The drawings on display are all unique to the students who created them and serve as a benchmark for future projects this year. Please take a moment to enjoy the November show, Cups. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuns. Dr. Burak, presentations.
Thank you. We have a group of young gentlemen here. I think they're all dressed very sharply in their special uniforms. So I'd like to turn it over to Coach Jaeger of the football team.
All right. So when I got hired in June, I had known that they did benefit games here in the past. And so when we're thinking of something to raise money for, we have a senior on our team, Nick Pagliisi, and there's actually a longer history there, but it's not important now. But I knew that he had a brother who has cerebral palsy. So when I approached him and his family and I asked them, I said, we'd like to raise money on his behalf, and we sat and spoke early in June. And when we thought about who we could raise the money for and who we could give the money to, and thought about like the Cerebral Palsy Foundation and stuff like that, and they came up with the idea of raising money for Camp Anchor. And he goes to Camp Anchor, and we have a longstanding tradition here, I know, in Limbrook, with students who go to Camp Anchor and volunteers and teachers who work at Camp Anchor. So I thought it was a really nice idea, and so we kind of ran with that. And Antonio, who's here right now, he became our honorary captain for the day. And we invited some of our other students, like I know Katie McHale's here. She has a brother on the JV team. And so we invited them to be part of the celebration. And the kids really embraced it, and Antonio and his family really embraced it. And we were just, it was a really exciting day and a really exciting moment for the football team. And I'm happy to say that with the help of the parents, the Gridiron Club, and our own boys, we raised $3,200 for Camp Anchor. We do have, we do have a representative here, Mr. McKenna, I think is here somewhere, if he wants to come up. I would just say, on behalf of the Limbrook football team, we're happy to present you guys. We know you use it well, and we hope to do it again.
Thank you very much, Coach.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kenny. So thank you all. I appreciate all the support. Really great. And thanks for these guys, because they did a great job with it, so.
Right. Thank you to the whole team and Coach for doing this. It always makes us proud when our kids think about others before themselves, so it's nice. Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Jaeger, I had anticipated making some comments, as you could possibly imagine, with you coming up. And I was going to say how much we do miss you having you on the board and how happy I am in your new role, what a great job you've done. But I guess Mr. Feldman said it best to me, because as you came up here to the podium, he leaned over to me and he says, have you ever seen him this happy? So I want to say, I'm very happy for you. You did a great job with the boys, great job at the high school. So congratulations on everything you've accomplished this year. We have one retirement this year. Mrs. Javett, you are not here, I believe. Whereas, Javett, Ms. Christina Javett, ENL teacher in the Limbrook Union Free School District, has announced her intention to retire effective January 27, 2023, after serving the Limbrook community for more than 20 years. And whereas, Mrs. Javett quickly learned English and assimilated into the American culture and education system when she immigrated from Portugal to the United States of America when she was 12 years old. Mrs. Javett succeeded by graduating from Baru College with a bachelor's degree in marketing, followed by a master's degree from Adelphi University in TESOL, teaching English to speakers of other languages. And whereas, Mrs. Javett applied her knowledge and personal experiences to her teaching, but more so her compassion for her students as they face challenges in assimilating and succeeding in a new country, as she did. And whereas, Mrs. Javett has been an important asset to the district as she is multilingual. In addition to learning English, she speaks Spanish, Italian, and of course, her native Portuguese. And whereas, she loves the outdoors and never misses an opportunity to read a good book at the beach or go for long walks and bike rides to admire nature. Mrs. Javett also loves to travel, especially to Portugal to visit relatives and her dear brother. And whereas, Mrs. Javett has an amazing artistic eye, and her home looks like a page from Better Homes and Gardens. She's been a keen, she has a keen knowledge of flowers and plants and chooses them to make the outside of her home as beautiful as the inside. She is a fabulous cook and finds time to prepare delicious meals despite her 40-mile commute to Limbrook in each direction. And through the years at the high school, has shared this love of cooking with her students. And whereas, the Board of Education extends our heartfelt thank you to Mrs. Javett for her years of dedicated service to Limbrook Public Schools and wishes her a happy and healthy retirement, filled with time with her husband Glenn and her son, Thomas. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Limbrook Board of Education, the Limbrook Union Free School District, accepts the resignation of Christina Javett for the purpose of retirement effective January 27, 2023. Congratulations. Is Michelle Regan here? You could stand up. Congratulations, elementary school teacher at Marion Street, after being at the KC for 10 years. Congratulations. And Bill Ludwig, congratulations on being the head custodian at the high school. Congratulations, Bill. At this time, we will take 60 seconds for our young athletes to... Nope, not going anywhere.
Just be a little more patient.
The last presentation for this evening... Oh, sorry. The last presentation for this evening is, we do have a group of students here, and Mrs. Torres and Mrs. Smith, to go over the Seal of Biliteracy program that we have. And I think that Principal Sarosi is also going to join them. So I'm going to turn it over to them for the final presentation.
ENL chairperson for the district. It is my pleasure to be here today to talk about the New York State Seal of Biliteracy. The New York State Seal of Biliteracy is an award given by a school or a school district to graduating seniors who have attained a high level of proficiency in both English and at least one or more world language. The SEAL highlights the hard work and achievement of all of our students, and it encourages them to pursue language study while they are in school. This special recognition also highlights the importance of being belligerent in today's global society. The New York State Seal of Biliteracy is awarded by the commissioner to students who meet the criteria as established by the New York State Board of Regents. The schools have to voluntarily participate for this program. And once the SEAL is awarded, it is affixed to the student's high school diploma and their transcript. They also do receive a certificate from New York State with the state emblem on it. And they also get a medal that they can wear if they choose to during graduation. And last year, many of them did. It was so nice to see. So what is the criteria? First of all, they have to complete all requirements for graduating with a New York State Regents diploma. Successful candidates will also earn three points in English and three points in world language from a matrix that you will see soon. This matrix includes course grades, national and state exams, transcripts, and culminating projects, as you will see in the following two slides. Criteria for demonstrating proficiency in English. They can earn three points using a variety of any of these, as long as it adds up to three points. So they score one point value if they score an 80 or higher on the New York State Regents exam. Or if they're English language learners, they can earn a score of 75 or higher on two Regents exams in a language other than English without translation. 1B, English language learners can earn an overall score of 290, which places them in the advanced or expanding level on the New York State English as a Second Language Achievement test. They can earn a score also for completing all 11th and 12th grade ELA courses with an average of 85 or higher. They can also receive a 3 or higher on an AP exam to get a point. And the final two points that they can earn is when they present a culminating project, a scholarly essay, or portfolio that meets the criteria for the four language skills of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. This is established by the district's Seal of Biliteracy. We do have a panel that we have set up. And based on that recommendation, this panel then meets with all the students. Everything is reviewed, and they have to score at least intermediate-high proficiency level in English. The criteria for demonstrating proficiency in a world language, it's basically the same, but it's for the world language. They have to complete a checkpoint C-level world language. In Limbrook's case, it's either in Spanish or in Italian. 2B, if the student is from outside of the country, they have to provide a transcript from a school in a foreign country that proves that they have at least three years of instruction in that student's home language, native language, with an equivalent grade of B or higher. 2C does not pertain to Limbrook. 2D, they have to score at a proficient level, which is considered an AP exam, world language exam. And 2E, once again, presenting a culminating project, scholarly essay, or portfolio that meets the criteria for the four language subskills, listening, reading, writing, and speaking. So in Limbrook, we've seen such great growth. And I'm so happy to report that when I first applied to the state and brought the program to Limbrook in the year, in the school year of 2020 and 2021, we had three students that applied for the program, for the, excuse me, for the special award, and they were granted it. The three students happened to be ENL students. They, it was our first year. Our second year, we opened it up to everyone, regardless of native language, and as long as they were studying language in a world language course. And we had 20 students last year participate, and they received the Seal of Biliteracy. This year, we have a projected number of over 50 students that have expressed an interest in their prospective candidates to receive the Seal of Biliteracy. We are so happy to see such growth. It has more than doubled, and it just shows how important being multilingual in today's society is, and the students actually understand it and they appreciate it. And as such, they're applying for it, and it's all voluntary. So as long as they meet the three points criteria, they are able to apply, and then they go before a review panel, and as such, they receive the Seal of Biliteracy. I have two students here that would like to tell you in their own words why they would like to pursue the Seal of Biliteracy and what it means to them. So if I can have the chance to invite from Limbrook High School, Eileen Castillo and Lady Ramirez.
Hi, my name is Eileen Castillo. I'm in 12th grade. I'm excited to present for the Seal of Biliteracy this year. For the past two years, I watched my friends present, and I was so impressed by how beautifully they spoke about their cultures and how well they spoke in both English and their home languages. Their presentations were interesting and informative. I am honored to be given the opportunity to earn this recognition. I arrived in this country when I was 11 years old. I only knew a little bit of English. My project for the Seal of Biliteracy centers on immigration issues in both my home country, Honduras, and the United States of America. In Honduras, people are suffering as a result of poverty, gang violence, and political unrest. Immigrants from Honduras are escaping from these dangerous situations. This is why my family came to the United States. In the United States, the issues of immigration is very complex. I have been learning through my research that there is a major crisis right now as a result of a huge number of immigrants arriving at the borders. The United States is struggling to accommodate all of these migrants. I look forward to continuing my research and possibly investigating solutions into the immigration issues that both Honduras and the United States face.
Hello, my name is Lady. My project centers around gangs and poverty in my home country, El Salvador. I came to this country when I was nine years old, and I didn't speak one word of English. The reason my family came to this country was for a better future for my cousins and me. They wanted us to be able to have the opportunity they didn't have of attending school and making it to college. For my Seal of Biliteracy project, I have been researching the history of poverty and gangs in El Salvador. I'm including my own personal experiences with these both, with both of these issues. In El Salvador, poverty is widespread. A typical job in El Salvador doesn't pay more than $5 a day, and many people can't even find jobs. Many people are not able to make enough to buy food for a week. And El Salvador is mostly known for the control and power of gangs, and that is certainly true. Statistics reveal that over 60,000 gang members live in El Salvador, and 60% of schools are affected by gang threats. This led to tens of thousands of kids dropping out of school. A high percentage of teenagers are forced to join gangs, which is why the high school graduation rate is so low. Gangs control the country in ways you can't even imagine. Even the police officers are afraid of gangs. There is corruption when the police get money for staying out of the way of gangs. I know that poverty and gang exist in the United States, but it is on a different level than my country. I look forward to continuing my research in order to inform people of the struggles that people living in El Salvador are forced to endure. Thank you.
I'm so proud of these two young ladies. They have come such a long way. And you heard their English? I think it was great. So thank you so much for listening to them, for giving them the opportunity to be here, and for allowing this program to come into our district. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight. And thank you to Eileen and Lady. Definitely a wonderful job. So the Seal of Biliteracy has been around for a few years. And really, what does it mean to Limbrook High School? I think that preparing the students for the world they're going to enter is our sole, our main responsibility. And being belligerent, being bilingual are two advantages to not only our native speakers, but also any student in LHS to have as they enter into that global society that we're all a part of right now. It also opened up a wonderful opportunity for the humanities. Not the Seal of Biliteracy, but a newer award that the state has given is called the Seal of Civic Readiness. So we began the application process over the summer, which we've been awarded permission to begin that process. And it's very, very similar to what you just learned about the Seal of Biliteracy. There's two columns. Instead of proficiency in English and another language, it's proficiency in civic knowledge, which is the social studies credits and exams, and then also civic participation. So that second column really pushes what our students could be doing, you know, in terms of project-based learning, which is, which seems to be a way that the state is moving. One, one point that I think is important to share with the board is the advantage to being a candidate for the Seal of Biliteracy is wonderful to have on a high school diploma, but it doesn't help our students in the fall of their senior year when they're beginning that competitive college application process. So Mrs. Torres deserves a lot of credit because she kept going back to the state and expressing that to them. So what we've been given permission to do for our seniors is on their transcripts and on their resumes, is to put verbiage on there that they are candidates for the Seal of Biliteracy. And we would like to do the same thing once we learn more about the Seal of Civic Readiness, because it's this time of year that it would give our students an advantage, you know, while applying. So I think that that's a wonderful thing. Also, interestingly enough, and this we just learned today, but the multiple pathways for graduation in New York State. There was a meeting that took place. Our Director of Guidance, Ms. Mitchell, attended it, and she sent the PowerPoint that they, that they sent to the people who were there. But one of the pathways, aside from earning a Regents or Regents exam credit in the four major subjects, is earning the Seal of Civic Readiness towards graduation. So I think this is something that, you know, maybe the picture's not exactly clear right now because it's new, but, you know, give it some time, and this is going to be a big thing for a lot of kids around the state, but in particular for Limbrook High School. And we can, and can see which students this will benefit down the road. So again, I appreciate the time, and if anybody had questions.
I have a question, Mr. Sarosi. First, to the two young ladies, that was excellent. You know, learning a language is difficult enough, but then you compound that, that having to come and speak publicly was really beautiful. Very impressive to be able to do that and to express those kind of heartfelt words was great. And thank you for taking the time to share that with us. I appreciate that. Mr. Sarosi, just clarify for me, in the beginning, I think she indicated those first were ENL, ELL students, and now it's progressed to this point. What's the distinction between the Seal of Biliteracy and the world language recognition?
The Seal of Biliteracy and the world language?
Right. There was two things that were indicated, so.
Sure. So the Seal of Biliteracy is the culmination of those two slides. They're actually columns on the sheet that the state gives us next to one another. You have to earn six cumulative points, three from each column. And how you get those points for the Seal of Biliteracy, one is focused on English as a language, even if it's not your native language. It's focused on English. The other is a world language, again, even if it's not your native. So depending on where you're coming from, whether you're, you know, a student whose first language isn't English, the English column's going to be tougher to accumulate those three points. For many students in Limbrook High School, the tougher column will be in a world language. And there are several ways to get it. You can get it through course credit. You could get it through, through scoring mastery on some of the checkpoint exams, AP exams. It's really designed by the state to accomplish by the time you graduate high school.
Was it created initially for ELL students? Or for anybody to become proficient in any language they want to be able to?
Ms. Torres can certainly correct me if I'm wrong. I think that it was made for everybody. We started it in Limbrook that first year, where we were really piloting it, with ELL students.
Okay. Obviously, that's expanding as you've shown that graph pretty quickly. All right, perfect. Thank you, Mrs. Sarosi.
And that's exactly why I asked them to present, because that is tremendous growth in three short years. And just to further clarify, in answer to his question, just give an example. If a student's native language is English, what are some of the other world languages that our students possess that are earning them that Seal of Biliteracy? You'd be amazed.
And this would be in the 30 that you see there. So this was from last year.
Right. But just give everyone an idea of what our kids know.
So for example, last year, we did Spanish, Italian, Tagalog, Albanian, and the fifth, it's escaping me. That was it. It was the fourth, I'm sorry, the fourth. This year, we actually have Greek, the same ones, in addition to Greek. We also have Haitian Creole. I'm not sure if they're going for it, but they're going to candidates. So it's five or six different languages now. And Urdu. Actually, Urdu is the other one.
They have a mastery of it on their own.
Okay. So Dr. Burak actually called me out, because I was afraid to ask that question, but she just clarified it for me. So we're taking children who have the ability to do that and getting them recognition for that skill set.
Exactly.
All right. That's great.
For the project, is that built into one of the classes they're already taking? Or is that a separate, independent study piece that these candidates are doing?
So right now, on the committee, it's comprised of Mrs. Sarosi, myself as the ENL chairperson, Mrs. Smith is the English teacher, Mr. Luzzi, who for the Spanish, and Ms. Antoinette.
Tranquina.
Sorry, for Italian. So basically, the teachers from the classrooms, the students are in those classes in either anything above 3H or above, or AP classes. Mr. Luzzi's class, for example, is all AP. And he works with the children separately on these projects as well, aside from the schoolwork, as does Ms. Smith. Who, by the way, Ms. Smith, thank you so much for your help today.
And if I could, that same question, but for the Seal of Civic Readiness, we're actually looking to incorporate more into the actual courses, into the 12th grade social studies classes. So Mr. Finder just attended a Long Island Council for Social Studies workshop, and that's where a lot of the district seems to be going. Because all the students take social studies in 12th grade. Be a great opportunity for... take social studies in 12th grade. Be a great opportunity for for all the kids.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And and I also just want to follow up with Mr. Belmont said. Ladies, there are many people whose native language is English, who are terrified to get up at that microphone and speak. You should be very proud of yourselves for what you just did in front of all these people. So, give yourselves a good pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. At this time, I want to thank all the students for their participation this evening. I know you're anxious to go home, study, get your work done, play some play some Call of Duty, something like that. So, we'll take a 60-second break so you can all leave. You are excused.
Want to stay?
You can stay. You got 60 seconds, though. After that, once you hear you're staying. And I said all those nice things about you, Yaker. Mr. Basher, if you could help quiet it down in the back, I'd appreciate it. Moving on with the rest of the meeting, we'll go to report from trustees. We'll begin with the PTA liaison report with Ms. Argona.
Thank you. Can you? Hello. First, council would like to thank everyone for supporting the scholarship game. It was a beautiful day, a great turnout, and a great win for Limbrook, so thank you. Council would also like to invite everyone to their joint council event. It's going to take place on Tuesday, November 15th, at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. There will be a presenter that will be discussing executive functioning, managing schoolwork, and everyday life. Both parents and children are invited to come. Attendees will learn strategies for helping children develop and improve their executive functioning skills, beginning in elementary school through middle and high school and beyond. These skills help students with organization, goal-setting, planning, and managing emotions. And there will also be a question and answer portion at the end of the presentation. For anyone who's never attended a joint council event, they're really they they're really great events. They're always super informative, very relevant. So, if you're available on November 15th, I highly encourage you to attend. Also, this is not directly PTA-related, but I did want to mention that the Limbrook Police Department is looking to hire part-time crossing guards. So, anyone interested can pick up an application at Limbrook Police Headquarters. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Ms. Argona. Anything else on the board?
Yeah, I just I wanted to say that I wanted to thank the National Art Honor Society for the amazing Night of the Pumpkins once again. It's one of my favorite events to bring my my family to. The effort that they put into those carvings, I mean, it really, you don't need to go up to Old Westbury Gardens. I mean, the the quality here is is really just as good, and I'm not sure who they're donating the money to this year, but it always goes to a great cause. And then I also had the pleasure of attending the semifinalist awards recognition. I know Dr. Biarck's going to talk about it a little later on, but there were 200 some odd students, teams that participated in the Project Liftoff, and the semifinalists were acknowledged, and they had an amazing outside speaker who came in. He has gone up into space. He's a self-made billionaire who may or many hundreds of millionaire who made it up into space because he paid for it. But he had great stories to tell the students. They were really just hanging on by the by the edge of their seats, listening to him. And if you're ever in Princeton, he has an open invitation to come see his spacesuit.
And and we can actually thank Mrs. Marshal for that. She was she was our connection to that individual.
Seeing nothing else on the board, moving on to old business. As we've referenced in prior meetings, conversations about booster group raffles, is that something the board would like to entertain? And if so, we'd have to address that with our policy committee. I could kick it off, and I think it's definitely something I think I would be open to doing as long as we stay within the confines of what we need. I think there is a consensus from the board on that. So, let's see if we can get that to the policy committee. We'd have to modify the policies. We have include the relevant staff members that would be responsible for communicating and liaising with those boosters, and we'll update the community after that. Excellent. Nothing under new business. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Okay. Don't worry, the year's almost over. Okay. As Mr. Murray mentioned, we had a very wonderful evening on November 1st. Unfortunately, I could not be in attendance, but I did send a video message to everyone, because this really has been a fantastic project for the district and the involvement that our science teachers had in it and promoting it with their students. We had so many students participate in it. As I had previously mentioned, over 200 teams of students were engaged in this. So, what I wanted to do tonight, because there was so much work involved, I'm going to do my best to share the titles of these and the names of the students who were involved, and I will apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. But we have for the semifinalists, those who made it and presented their research projects to a panel on during that symposium. We have the effect of microgravity on the growth of pumpkin seeds. I guess it was the season, right? So, pumpkin seeds. Emma Taverna, Sophia Germany, Caitlin Lubrano, and Christian Cueto. The effect of microgravity on the oxidization of iron. Anderson Bell, Liam Propra, Owen Rudolph, and Antonio Zolo. How will microgravity affect the amount of planktonic algae sea monkeys eat in microgravity? Something I'm sure we question every day, right? So, Grace Straub, Allison O'Hara, Dylan Scala, and Kayla Rundell. Evaluating evaluating an arachnid's ability to build a web in microgravity. Kyoko Williams and Sebastian Pintos. What is the effect of microgravity on the speed of ant tunneling? Elena Bassett, Riwa Berbis, Cian Boyle, Jasmina Meckic, and Melania Stark. This one, I know I can't pronounce. How does Henigoya salminicola affect Chinook salmon in the ISS? That is Hannah Klonsky, Emily Scala, Zoe Macheny, Camilla Escobar, and Angela Orozco. A Hotchkyn Lephone cells in microgravity? That is Bailey Gorgolus, Delia Kirkpatrick, and Annabelle Murray. Can a ladybug kill a plant-eating pest in microgravity? Brandon Ostroff, Royo Velazquez, Marina Perna, and Annabella Enrico. The effective the effects microgravity have on bioluminescence? Jonah Rolnik, Sean Gonzalvo, and Brandon Nicholas. How does microgravity affect penicillin mold? Shamin Persada, Garrett Reed, Ryan Dugger, Jake Jodorowsky, Eric Matern. The effects of microgravity on planaria's rate of regeneration? Daniel Quinlan, Jake Giddings, Vincent Brunet, Sophia Mekelakos, Aaron Malinka. How does microgravity and space conditions affect the growth of the winecap mushroom? Jack Murray, Aiden Michaels, Chris Mangieri, Jamil Bastista. The effect of microgravity on the germination of sea moss? Ella Carroll, Charles Horton, Isabella Medrano, Sandra Schwartzman, and Peyton Stalter. The effects of microgravity on the Ouchaloney technique? I'm sure I mispronounced that. Colin Linzer, Sophie Daifel, Gabrielle Suarez. Those are pretty impressive topics, if you think about it. These are students grades six through 12. So, congratulations to all the students who took the time to do that research and to make it to the semifinalists. At the December meeting, we will announce the three finalists, and I do believe the the program will let us know which one of those three finalists are going to actually be chosen for the the flight after right after the the December board meeting. So, wait until January for that one. Okay. Yesterday was our superintendent's conference day, and our staff engaged in various workshops, all dealing with health and safety this year. That was our main focus. So, I want to thank the Teacher Center for organizing a wonderful event. We had sessions on stop the bleed, CPR, creating a sense of safety and security in a post-pandemic world and beyond, using a respondent's lockdown browser with Schoology assessments, mindfulness in the classroom, survival Spanish for school staff, stages of cultural justice adjustment, and how we can help ELLs at every stage, and culturally responsive teaching. So, it was a great day for the teachers. Everybody seemed to enjoy themselves, and I want to thank all the presenters. Most of those presentations were done by our own staff, who shared their expertise. So, I want to thank everyone for putting together that wonderful conference day. For a curriculum update, we have Dr. Bilekis with the assessment results, which you see on the screen.
Thank you, Dr. Biarck. As you can see on the slide, we have a comparison of our results on the last two administrations of the three to eight ELA and math state assessments prior to COVID compared to last year's results. The ELA results are consistent, and the math results you can see are slightly lower. Although the overall results are similar, we are still concerned about some individual students and the impact that COVID has had on them. So, what we did, we examined each of the individual students behind the numbers, and we have offered support to those who we believe need them. We will continue to monitor everyone's progress and try to fill in any of the identified gaps as soon as possible. During our analysis, some positive things actually came to light as well. For instance, since nearly all of our third graders took the exams, they performed exceptionally well on both the math and ELA assessments, and significantly outperformed schools in other districts. The same cannot be said for our middle schools, unfortunately, where the opt-out rates were significantly higher and the data was skewed. Not only did the missing data points create an incomplete picture, but also it appears to have impacted those that were taking the tests as well. It's clear that some of the middle school students may not have been as motivated and did not take the test too seriously, as their academic performance in the classroom far outweighed their performance on the tests. As always, we will continue to use the three to eight assessments as another source of information to refine our instruction and add supports as needed. Thank you.
And capital projects update?
So, we're getting to the point, we're going to be bidding out some new projects. The Waverly Park Courts, the rebid will take place tomorrow, so we'll have a recommendation, hopefully, in at the December meeting. And the same thing with the high school library bid. That will be opened on the 16th of November, and so hopefully, the board will be awarding that at that at the December meeting.
And that's the report.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and indicate if you live in or out of district.
Hello. Hello, all. Hello. Thank you. My name is Tammy Dugger Sarchenko. I live in the Limbrook School District. I have a seventh-grade son, and I have extended family in the high school. Now, I have to get back to my my point of note. I don't usually use a speech, but I have to stay on point. I'm not good at that, so I know that there's a lot of time, not a lot of time. So, I'm just going to read it. And I had to redo it several times based on the letter that came out from South. So, I am addressing the issue that happened at South Middle School, the school's response, and in turn, all the rest that happened afterwards. So, I want to preface that I am not an expert on race relations, but based on last Friday's assembly, I'm not the only one. I am also not strongly political one way or the other, as will be indicated as I continue on. I am here to speak specifically to the items not addressed in your clarification letter to parents the other day, and my expectations going forward from you. Okay. With all of the state and federal funding you have available to you, you failed to retain expert and age-appropriate guidance for the for this assembly. Instead, I feel someone Googled "race" and 12 years old and came with a with a video that no one is taking accountability for approving. I'm not going to spend my time here detailing the wrongness of the content and the timing of the video. That's not what I want you to take away from my dialogue. I will, however, reference to it in a few instances of failure, namely that it had spiraled the conversation from a local school-related incident into the smell of Latin food, rogue cops, and ignorant salespeople. Global race issues simply can't be solved here in this moment. To these kids, school is their world, the place where they are defined. You should have specifically addressed the incident that happened at their second home, their school. I feel the assembly should have been about strongly convincing our children that you will use all available resources to find the culprits, whether from the school or the broader community, and will work hard to keep our kids safe at and around school. Then perhaps ask the question, what if someone carved the F-word into the tree? Is it the same as the N-word or a swastika? They're both axed to facing property, and they are unacceptable terms and symbols in our language. Ask the question and start a conversation, and maybe they'll get something out of it. But you didn't. You went 180 degrees. Any further dialogue could have been saved for another day, but the core issue should have been discussed. Excuse me. But since you did go further, you obviously put no thought and effort into it. You spoke to less than a handful of bullet points, shut down my son when he did ask a valid 12-year-old child's question, and sent them on their way back to class. Perception is reality, and these kids of all colors and backgrounds were left to their own perceptions. The consensus from more than 50 parents, when they asked their kids about the assembly, said their kids got zero takeaway out of it. So, what was the actual gain of that assembly? So, you could tell the state and department you addressed an issue that you didn't? As I stated, the school's lack of response to the incident at hand was abysmal. We believed you when you said you could handle it, and we believed you when you said you did. However, in discussion with my child and the admission in the letter, you really didn't, and the majority of children didn't even speak to their parents about how it might have impacted them. The markings on open school grounds specifically slurred Jews and Blacks. Jewish hate, which barely rated more than a two-liner, had been on the has been on the rise as of late these days, and by brushing it aside, you doubled down on its unimportance. The whole assembly was hurriedly patchworked together, and it showed the kids just left confused. And as an aside, and I really hate to say this as an aside, in the high school, the place where the next generation go out into the world and do well for themselves and others and become leaders of tomorrow, the antisemitism and hate word incident simply got a one-liner during morning announcements. There's something very wrong with that. We're one district. That's the third reported hate word offense on school grounds this year that I even know about, and we've barely hit the end of the first marking period. I can't say that now. I realized that every race discussion evolved, in talking with my child, I realized that every race discussion evolves from a racist act that occurred. That's how the dialogue starts. Somebody did this, and let's finger wag at people. Why is that always the narrative? Why is that always the tone? How does that promote assuring our kids that freedom to participate in an open dialogue is okay? Isn't it beneficial to equip our kids with positive tools that truly promote connectivity instead of the finger wagging that always seems to happen? Even listening to those two young ladies, you know, that is a perfect example. She was talking about her country. She was talking about the plights of her family. She was talking about it was all an uphill battle to be able to stand right here at this podium and win that award and have us clap for her. And she did it. So something like developing a district-wide project with guide questions where the kids can relay their family history or current experiences with another random child, not like pick a black child with a white child and a Hispanic kid with it, no, random kids. Some kids might speak French at home. Some kid could be a descendant of Free Blacks from Tennessee that weren't part of slavery. Kids' families fled a country when it changed governments. Then the children can write each other's stories in like a book of knowledge or something that can be shared on our website for the kids and their parents to read together. There are so many fascinating stories that can counteract the "there's them, there's us, and there's them" mentality in an age-appropriate way. It's just a thought. I'm just throwing that out there. Community commonality and understanding help kids get to know each other. Communication begets understanding of people's plights and successes, and is important to show there are more similarities than differences. And wearing orange on a given unity day doesn't magically make that happen. Bottom line is, you should have focused on the matter at hand, and with adequate time and thoughtfulness, you could have partnered with us parents to provide a comprehensive, productive, and meaningful conversation in the near future, but you chose not to. In my opinion, the details of the assembly were purposefully omitted from the follow-up email that Friday to keep parents unaware and uninformed. I can't speak for all of us, but I demand the opportunity to understand what is conveyed in schools so that I may choose to further that conversation at home and allow my child to speak his thoughts and concerns openly and honestly. Home and school are supposed to be a true partnership, not one-sided. We're supposed to be in this together. One thing you've managed to do is bring virtually all people in the Lindbrook School District together to agree that this was colossally failure. This was a colossal failure. So congrats on bridging that divide. You can't undo what you've done. I lost my faith in you as my son's daytime guardian to trust that you will properly do anything you promised us you will do, nor to keep us informed. You need to work hard to regain our trust in your choices with what's put in front of our children. So here are my four directives I'd like to pose to you guys and probably everybody else in the district. The same way the kids sign a code of conduct, I demand the board and the individual school administrators come up with a parent-approved discussion point that they sign that will include immediate transparency, because that's one of my biggest gripes right now. Immediate transparency when sensitive and important issues occur. Shouldn't hear it through the grapevines just because you happen to have a couple of moms in your phone. You will commit to communicating your intended, mindfully-prepared talking points to parents via email, request input by a deadline date. Nobody can complain if nobody wants to reach out and have a say, but you didn't give us that option either. And number three, I want to implore this board to put fail safes in place so there is proper QA and parent inclusion for all non-traditional education programs and initiatives before it gets to our children. If you don't know what you're talking about, be humble and say, "I don't know what I'm talking about," and find somebody who can. And finally, provide notification and updates of acts like the scrolling on the tree and the provide follow-up should there be one. Those tend to fall off, right? You hear, "Oh, my God, they scrolled something in a tree," and it's like dead air. You may or may not find out about what's going on. It is more important that I say my say on record, should you ever remotely feel like you can do this again. This is my zero tolerance rule. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and let my thoughts be heard. Thank you.
For your comments.
Hello. My name is Pamela O'Wearden. I'm a Lindbrook District resident, and I have an eighth grader and I have a fifth grader. I don't know if I can really say it better than Ms. Dugger did. However, I didn't know about the video until my friend sent it to me. And when I inquired, a car full of eighth graders and seventh graders, they were like, "Yeah." They showed us the video. "Yeah, we didn't get anything out of it." One, what did this video have to do with the incident? What did the video that was from the Anti-Defamation League or group that you seem to have gotten it from have to do with the scrolling of the offensive N-word and swastika on a tree on our school grounds? It had absolutely nothing to do with it. In fact, all it showed was the hatred, in my opinion, of police officers, white privilege, people coming from a different country, making fun of what they cooked. That's what that four-minute video showed. It didn't show anything about the intolerance of those things happening in our school. It did nothing. We have a PTA. We have paid parents who pay to be a part of this school district, to be involved in the things that happen in our schools, with our students, with you. And nobody informed us that this was the video that they were going to show. Nobody. They didn't include any of us. And instead, I have to find out through the grapevine, oh, hey, by the way, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to show, and, you know, oops, our bad. You know, did anybody vet this video? Did anybody actually look at this video and say, "I don't know if this is really hitting the mark. This is what we want to include"? And there was no open dialogue, and it was kind of, everybody was kind of poo-pooed and made to feel like their opinions or questions were really not valid. We have to do better. We have to do better of including our kids in the process of incorporating unity and peace and understanding of other people's cultures, other people's faiths, religions, and all of that. I'm really, really, really disappointed in how the board and the school district chose to handle this situation. There's so many different things that could have happened. A video about, you know, Holocaust survivors would have been a better choice than the video that you guys showed. I really, really hope that coming forward, that there's going to be a lot more transparency, there's going to be a lot more parent involvement. You guys will have meetings with us and say, "Hey, you know, this is what's going on. Come to a PTA meeting. Sit in at a PTA meeting and hear what the things that are going on in the school district and in our classrooms and in each individual school." That would be a way for you guys to understand what we're dealing with and what we see. I just really hope that you guys do a much better job in including the parents, because the video and how it was handled was a real disappointment.
Thanks for your comments.
I can't say more than what she said. I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I'm good at that, but I'm not going to do it today. What I am going to do is say thank you to Mr. Cangelosi, who's my daughter's social studies teacher. This is a very sensitive topic. There's a lot of Jews in this room, just on the board, and we all know how we all feel about this. This is horrible. I know how you all feel about this. This is a personal thing. A swastika, the N-word, these are things that we have to get rid of, but the only way we can get rid of them is if we address them head-on. I think what we need to do is talk about it within the curriculum, right? I'm not for CRT. I'm against it, but I am for curriculum that includes different things that are true about history, and we can incorporate that into the books and into social studies classes and in other ways. And I know that we are doing that and we're working towards that. So I just want to say that it would have been great had it been approached properly, and I'm sure the way it was set up is regretted, and I trust that you will deal with that. But I also want to make sure that you know that some teachers did address it directly, and Mr. Cangelosi was one of them. And my daughter came home, and she did address to me that she was very disappointed in the assembly, but was very thankful to him. So I thought that was also something worthy of being on the record to say. My son was absent for two days, first two days in like five years that he was absent, and he missed those days of conversation. But I did hear from some of his friends that some of the teachers in very random classes, math teacher here, English teacher there, did address it as well. There was something on the announcements, but teachers did address it because they believe it's important, and it is. So I know that not everybody hears everything in the district. There's a lot of us that are in different schools. So I just want to acknowledge the teachers that did take on the topic and will continue to do so. I think that the Holocaust is just personally, for me at least, you know, it's something that everybody should learn about. It's, you know, more than 77 years we're coming up on. Last night was Kristallnacht. It is something that we cannot stop teaching, and we can't make it a small issue or something that we're just going to, you know, say, "Okay, this is an act of hate." I believe that the biggest issue that everybody's having with this, if I can speak for some of the people I spoke to, is that the conversation started with a history of the swastika, which was that it used to be a symbol of peace, and now it's a symbol of hatred. And for more than 80 years, it's been nothing but a symbol of wanting to kill Jews, and there's no reason to give history of anything prior to that. Could be just my opinion, but I think that's the right opinion. We really need to make sure that, you know, we are giving the right message, and I know we do that in a lot of ways. So I just want to express that. Thank you.
So in a second, I'm going to have Dr. Bilekis just speaking a little bit on the context of it. I think the letter that came out addressed the concerns with the video and some of the issues with the video. So as the first speaker indicated, some of the things about that video are obvious. The other thing that's a shame, and this is my personal insight, is it's a shame that we have to, we're constantly teaching, we've discussed this for years, and we're constantly trying to teach our kids about empathy and walking in other people's shoes, and it should always be the subject. What's unfortunate is that when we call law enforcement, the news pick it up, because they don't really care about us, they just want to run a story like that. So all we've done unfortunately by having the news pick it up is we gave a voice to some idiot that put something on a tree that nobody heard of, but unfortunately, that wasn't our choice, the media picked that up. The lessons went on and so forth, but it's a shame when something like happens, we should clean it up and not allow them to have that voice, but continue to teach the lessons we're trying to teach. But just to give it some context, can you explain, there was more than that video, and so Dr. Bilekis can just address that because it has been...
Sure. The video was part of a larger assembly. You know, the video was approximately four minutes long. The assembly was approximately a period long. And during that assembly, the major messages that were delivered had to do with empathy and tolerance. And I know that folks have used the words Anti-Defamation League. Yes, this was a video that came from work with the Anti-Defamation League. If anybody walks into South Middle School, right before you get to the cafeteria, you see banners that say "No Place For Hate." And one of the things that we emphasize with our kids is tolerance, it is empathy and such. We did address the issues at hand for the majority of the assembly. You know, what the crux of the assembly was about was denouncing both hate symbols and hate speech and talking about what the impact of those things are on real individuals and trying to let them understand that these items are very intimidating. And, you know, when we were talking about the history of the swastika, it wasn't about a peaceful symbol. It was talking about 6 million Jews who died because of that symbol and underneath that symbol. So we tried to make sure that people understood what was going on. You know, as far as I know, that Mrs. Riley just talked about the Holocaust, it was something, actually, I was talking about earlier before all this happened, about where we addressed the Holocaust in different places in our curriculum, at both, actually, at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and talking about how we start in the elementary schools and teach about different aspects, go visit the Holocaust museum, and how that builds throughout the curriculum. So actually, that was happening prior to any of these things happening, which, you know, the timing of it was, you know, I was actually having that conversation a week before. And Mr. Cangelosi and I actually had a conversation about this, so it was really, you know, timely for him to have had that dialogue. We were talking about these things. So yes, he was very well-prepared to answer kids' questions, but I don't want people to think that the assembly did not talk about the issue at hand. The majority of the assembly was about the issue at hand. You know, the intent of the video originally was trying to make it relatable to middle school children. The voices in the video were middle school children from two different schools in Manhattan. Unfortunately, some of the things that were said by those children were, you know, not things that we teach here in Lindbrook. And that was, I think, the crux of a lot of the unrest here about what was going on. But the focus that happened during the assembly and how the video was contextualized during that and framed by our staff really was all within the context of empathy and tolerance. And everything that happened during the assembly was along those lines. And at the end of the assembly, we talked to the kids about, you know, pledging their, you know, support of one another and trying to be very supportive of all different peoples, regardless of whether or not they, you know, are from the same background as you. And I think that was really the gist of everything that went on, you know? If the students walked out understanding that hate speech and hate symbols should not be tolerated by anyone, that was what they should have walked out with. And I do think by the end of the school day, many kids did have that experience. Thank you.
So I think, I understand what you're saying, but I think the takeaway was different. And I think we have to remember that a 12-year-old doesn't see the same thing as an adult, and we have to take that into consideration, and maybe we have to have a panel, whether it's the school board, which these are parents of children. Somebody has to be seeing that and looking at it through a child's eyes, because the kids walked out of there and none of them remembered anything about the swastika. They remembered the video that said that they were afraid of police. That's all that anybody walked out of with, from what I heard, right? I could be wrong. This could be a group of people that contacted me, there was 50 people on this text. But I think the other thing is that we keep talking about tolerance. Tolerance, by definition, means we put up with people, right? You put up with something that makes you uncomfortable. We don't want to teach tolerance. We want to teach acceptance. So I just want to put that out there, and yes, I do know my daughters and my son, they had books, they've read over the years, they have had an education over the years, things about the Holocaust in addition to things that we do on our own, and I love the ideas of, we've been to Holocaust museums, but I don't know there's, you know, school trips. I know that through the Education Foundation, they had asked to go to the museum downtown, I forgot which one, the immigration one, I'm sorry that I can't think of the name right now. But I know there is a continuous curriculum going on, and I don't want that to be lost by the issue that we had today, and that's why I got up to speak, because it is really important. The things that we're doing are really important, and I'm really thankful that we're a school district who makes that a priority. But I think that's what it comes down to after listening to myself and her and what you just said, it's that the message did not get through correctly, and that's where we could maybe do it differently next time.
I agree with you, and that's what you saw in the letter. Unfortunately, what we tried to accomplish did get overshadowed by some of the content in the video, instead of trying to teach the lessons that we wanted the kids to walk away with. So yes, that was unfortunate, and, you know, like I said, too, we will be not only looking at this resource, but all the other resources we are using here to, you know, try to keep things like that from happening again.
Right. Something I can just throw out there that I've learned from being involved in PTA is that kids don't relate well to being told things spoken at. One of our most relatable or engaging events was one where we had a student panel. They like to talk to people. Kids like to talk and get answers to questions. They don't want to, they can watch a short video, yes, if it's appropriate, but they like to have conversations. That's how they understand. And just getting information thrown at them, adults can handle that, the kids really just stop listening. Many adults stop listening. We know this. Half the people that are watching, "Stop listening, because I'm talking, because I don't stop talking." I get that. But the kids really need to, we need to be aware of the fact that they need to be able to grasp on the concept that we're trying to push at the moment. And so the moment was, this was a swastika. like to have conversations, that's how they understand. And just getting information thrown at them, adults can handle that, the kids really just stop listening. Many adults stop listening, we know this. Half the people that are watching, stop listening because I'm talking, because I don't stop talking. I get that. But the kids really need to, we need to be aware of the fact that they need to be able to grasp on the concept that we're trying to push at the moment. And so the moment was, this was a swastika, this is the N-word, this is unacceptable, let's not do this. We didn't need an hour, an hour assembly on that. We needed a broad, very, not broad, very specific statement saying this is wrong and why it was wrong, and then end it, and then have conversations in the classroom. That's just my opinion on it. So thank you for what you tried to do, but we can do better next time, and I think, I think you will understand that, so I'm not going to harp on it. Thank you.
So I just want to respond because I think it took a lot of courage for the three speakers, Ms. Dugler, Ms. Riordan, and Ms. and Ivy Riley to come up and speak on these issues. We all know these are very charged, sensitive issues, and I appreciate you guys coming and giving the board your views on it, and the same goes to the many people who contacted the board about this issue. You guys serve an important process because you brought the issue to our attention. The board wasn't aware of the issue of this video before it was shown, but by contacting us, you brought it to our attention, and you heard today, and you saw in the letter, that video won't be shown going forward, and other videos like it won't be shown going forward. So I just want to thank you guys for having the confidence, the courage to come up and speak on this. I do think Dr. Bilekis made a really important point. The video may have not, the video wasn't the right video, let me be clear on it. I agree strongly as a parent in this district, my son is in sixth grade in the middle school, it wasn't the right video, but I don't want that to overshadow what the intent was. The intent was, there was a swastika, one of the most horrible signs of hate, and the N-word may be the most offensive or amongst the most offensive words in the English language carved into a tree. The video or the presentation was aimed at trying to address that, it was just the wrong way to do it. So I don't want anyone to think that that was done to steer away from or to deflect from, it was really an attempt to address it. It may have not been the most perfect attempt, in the video, I strongly agree with the opinions expressed on the video, but I do think that the intent was to try to address the idea... Oh, thank you, thank you, Counselor. I strongly disagree with the video, but I do agree with what was said, that the intent really was to address a very difficult issue, it just wasn't, the video wasn't the right way to do it.
Hi, I'm Maria Stadler. I have two kids in the middle school and another in the high school, and while I echo many of the comments here, and I can appreciate an attempt, and we all agree it missed the mark. I asked my kids what they got out of the video, and one kid said, "Don't draw on trees," and the other one wanted to know, "Does that person go here? Is the person who did that in this school?" Right? That was their biggest concern. Their biggest concern was, "Am I safe here? Is the person who did this and who could write these terrible things walking amongst us right now?" Right? The concern was around their safety and them feeling secure and free and able to be who they are and not be a victim of hate speech. They didn't know what hate speech was. I had a conversation about that with both of my kids, with all three of my kids, but it wasn't, they didn't understand how writing was hate speech, it didn't make sense, and I had to help that make sense for them. And had I had a little more information before, I might have been able to have these conversations when they came home on Friday, if I had some talking points or some resources, but I'm resourceful and I can find information, and I was able to do that, you know, and have, I think, I hope, what were meaningful conversations with my children about that. I would like to be involved in those kinds of decisions going forward. I would like to know what materials are going to be out when there is an incident, and I'd like to not be so reactive. It seems to me there was an incident, and we were reactive, and we didn't have a plan for how to address it before that happens. There was no crisis management plan. So going forward, I would like to know, what is the plan? How can you help us partner with you? Because we are partners. That's what being part of the PTA and what being parents in the district is. We're agreeing that you are there to educate our kids, but not alone, that we stand with you, and we want to support the education that's happening in the school, in our homes, and in our communities. This place needs to be safe for all of us, for our children and for adults. And the swastika and its symbol is not isolated to World War II, that is ancient history for our children. My life is ancient history for our children. So there is hate speech and anti-Semitic actions that are happening today, that happened six weeks ago, six months ago. There is recent history. We don't have to go back that far, unfortunately, to tell them that hate exists and we can do better.
Thank you. Oops, sorry. Hi, Christina Dillard, a resident. I have a daughter in sixth grade who was out on Friday, so I had no idea about any of this until I received text messages from my first grade son and daughter's friends, their parents. I'm just curious, and I don't, it's like my first board meeting where I actually ever spoke, if I just can pose the question, is there a district policy? I mean, I got the email, like, post-video of what had happened, and my daughter obviously missed everything, which I'm glad about, but is there a district policy in place if there were, you know, acts of vandalism, or I know when there's a threat, we're all notified, but is there, is there a policy in place if such a thing occurs that the parents are notified, like, prior to, I know everyone's saying, like, transparency and how to, you know, better handle it or, like, work together type of thing? Is there, is there a way to notify parents, like, this act occurred, so when the kids come home, we know, you know, a lot of kids come home, you say, "How was your day?" They say, "Fine," and they walk away. They aren't as open about all things that may have occurred, whether there's an assembly or something. Is there a policy in place within the district that would notify parents that we're, we had this assembly or we're planning on having this assembly? To anyone on the board?
There's no policy, I think. There's no policy, there's a certain practice, and to convert what you're indicating is you're requesting that as a matter of practice, there be consideration made as to what events are included in those things that parents are informed about that take place during the school day.
Okay, so I'm making that request.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Courtney Knack. I have three children currently enrolled in Limbrook Public Schools. I have struggled to put into words the level of frustration I am feeling around the events that have occurred at South Middle School and the responses on the part of Limbrook School leadership. The district so badly bungled its responses to the bigoted vandalism on South Middle property that I now find myself in the company of people who are not victims of this heinous vandalism. The poorly chosen video shown to students, followed by the letter from Dr. Bilekis, completely obfuscates the heart of the matter, that antisemitism and racism are alive and well in our town, and our district is ill-equipped to handle it. Two minority groups were directly targeted by the swastikas and racial slurs, and instead of directly confronting antisemitism and racism in a meaningful way, South Middle Administration shows a mealy-mouthed and largely irrelevant video about microaggressions that minimally, if at all, connected to the vandalism on school grounds. Thanks to this blunder, the very real fears held by Jewish community members are now competing for a voice with people offended by the video. We are losing the forest for the trees, and I place the blame squarely at your feet. Worse yet, you proceeded to insinuate this video was recommended by the ADL in response to the swastikas found on property. I cannot believe that to be true. Was the ADL conferred with before planning this assembly for students? Are they aware that you're communicating to us that the use of this video was endorsed by them? The ADL is the loudest voice in the country against antisemitism in response to an anti-Semitic crime. You blamed the ADL itself for the content of a video you chose to show. The school district administrator's actions have compounded the hurt and fear that minority families in this district are facing. It would be terrible to have done nothing about the video, but the subsequent letter has made things worse. My first anti-Semitic experience in my life was in sixth grade at South Middle School. This was in the fall of 1994. My youngest sister graduated in the class of 2011. That year, the community was aghast about swastikas drawn on the exterior wall of the high school in June. Here we are again in 2023. Has anything changed? People have leveled antisemitic and racist tropes in this community since I was a child. I ask the school board and district leadership to consider three actions. Apologize for choosing to show the minimally relevant video and the subsequent letter. Plan an appropriate event regarding antisemitism and racism to properly acknowledge the swastikas and racial epithets on South property. An example would be to begin a partnership with the Witness Project. Have a civil rights year historian present to students. Utilize the resources of the Holocaust Memorial and Tolerance Center in Glencov, New York. Confirm that each school's diversity council is meeting and crafting thoughtful events. That is the charge that No Place For Hate designation requires, and it seems as though either these meetings are not occurring, or if the councils are meeting, they are either ineffective or not staffed by minority ethnic group members. My son will be in South Middle School in two years. I want it to be a safe place for him. Please do better. Thank you.
So Ms. Knack, and I think you did come a little late, so we had addressed a lot of this, but I just want to address one point that's, I think, important to know. I also had faced antisemitism growing up in Limbrook earlier, but I don't look at it like I faced it in Limbrook. I never felt like it was part of my school, I never felt like it was part of my community. Unfortunately, we have those elements in our society, they're not going to go away. But the more people we help to educate about that, the more progress we can make in minimizing these people and making sure that other people don't join them. So as I indicated earlier, it's unfortunate that, we don't know who put that symbol up. It could have been someone for dozens of different reasons. They could be so ignorant, they didn't even understand what they were doing, or it could have been someone who had hatred, it could have been someone passing through. So it's important to recognize that those acts do exist, but I don't want to give the impression that this is what our community is about, this is what our school's about, and our children are about. I have found from the time, and I got a few years on you, that the kids that we're raising now are better than the kids that grew up generations ago. I think our kids are more empathetic and are more understanding and have a better appreciation for those type of things. So not getting into the addressing, we've addressed that other part of it, but it's important to understand, we're never going to get rid of those type of acts, but how we go about making sure we continue to talk about them, I think is one of the best ways we go about minimizing that group of individuals that exist out there.
And that I hope then, that the school district can be far more thoughtful about handling issues like this on school property than we were. And I say that because if you walk by that No Place For Hate banner, there are requirements that go with that. The Anti-Defamation League is incredibly active, I know there are resources out there, they have an entire downstate coordinator for that program. I really can't imagine that they were directly contacted after this event as to what to do now in a No Place For Hate school following a direct incident of hatred vandalism on school grounds. And I really think it's important that we use whatever resources are at our disposal.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Going to move on, unfortunately, we have three sympathy resolutions this evening. First one is Dr. Neela Warner. Whereas the members of the Board of Education of the Limbrook Union Free School District have learned with sorrow of the passing of Dr. Neela Warner, former employee of the Limbrook School District, and whereas Dr. Warner served as an elementary school teacher at Waverly Park, then became a science specialist at North and South Middle School for 10 years from 1992 through 2002, and whereas the Board of Education is mindful of the contributions made to our district by Dr. Warner during her years of service to our community, be resolved that the Board of Education records its sorrow, its sympathy, and the esteem to which Dr. Warner was held, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the family of Dr. Warner with the hope that they will find solace and comfort in the rich heritage of good works for which she is remembered and revered. Diane Yanushevsky. Whereas the members of the Board of Education of the Limbrook Union Free School District have learned with sorrow of the passing of Diane Yanushevsky, former employee of the Limbrook School District, and whereas Diane Yanushevsky served as a physical education teacher at Limbrook High School for 22 years from 1971 through 1993, and whereas the Board of Education is mindful of the contributions made to our district by Diane Yanushevsky during her years of service to our community, be it resolved that the Board of Education records its sorrow, its sympathy, and the esteem in which Doc, in which Diane Yanushevsky was held, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the family of Mrs. Yanushevsky with the hope that they will find solace and comfort in the rich heritage of good works for which she is remembered and revered. Thomas Hedgecock. Whereas the members of the Board of Education of the Limbrook Union Free School District have learned with sorrow of the passing of Thomas Hedgecock, former employee in the Limbrook School District, and whereas Thomas Hedgecock served as a math teacher at South Middle School for 32 years from 1972 through 2004, and whereas the Board of Education is mindful of the contributions made to our district by Thomas Hedgecock during his years of service to our community, be it resolved that the Board of Education records its sorrow, its sympathy, and the esteem in which Mr. Hedgecock was held, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the family of Mr. Hedgecock with the hope they will find solace and comfort in the rich heritage of good works for which he is remembered and revered. Now, I can't help but smile, which sounds ironic, I guess, being that I'm reading his sympathy resolution, but this, Dr. Bureau is not going to like that I say this. Mr. Hedgecock was a math teacher at South Middle School with Neil Giordano, and Neil was a Limbrook graduate himself in '72, a coach year, and he, Lisa's still here? Did you have him? You know, we used to sit in class, and we would play basketball with the erasers in class, it was like football with the erasers. We'd put the two garbage cans on top of the desks, and the students would be against Mr. Hedgecock and Mr. Giordano, and we would try and score inside, garbage cans inside the classrooms, but I think that type of physical contact is no longer permitted in school districts, but that is a fond memory, Lisa, of Mr. Hedgecock and Neil. Lisa and I graduated together, grew up together. We have donations this evening. The Board gratefully acknowledges and accepts the following donations: $3,000 to the Friends of Limbrook Music to be used to defray the cost of various music department field trips at North Middle, South Middle, and Limbrook High School, and $300 in the Limbrook North PTA for the John Halligan Ryan Story Assembly. I'd like to ask for consent agenda and resolutions 2211(c)(1) through 2211(c)(14), 2211(n)(1) through 2211nc)(11), 2211(g)(1) through 2211(g)(42). May I have a motion, please, Mrs. Aragona, second, Mrs. Tenino? May I have a motion, all in favor? May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Mr. Murray, second, Mr. Luna, all in favor? All right, good. Our next board meeting will be on December 7th. Everyone have a fun, safe, and enjoyable Thanksgiving, and for the first time in many years, a New York team will be playing on Thanksgiving in a meaningful football game. Everyone enjoy. Good night.